How old are you?
Hi, Tena Tātou eti whare. Naumai, hoki mai ki tēnei kaupapa ātāhua, It's in the Ballot. Paiki tekeiti ākauta, enga kanohi pai i tēnei por Tino Makariri. Engari, waka mahanatē nei whare, kitouta tātou reo, kitouta tātou kaha, kitouta tātou maori. Aida. I tē mata na'ou, kirunga i te karakia. Welcome all, thank you for, just to explain what I've been saying. Thank you for coming, good to see your beautiful faces here. We're just going to start with an acknowledgement and with the karakia. Fire, 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 kituro tapunuiotame. Tānei te wayora, tānei te pūkenga, tānei te wananga. Tānei te vaku putanei kite whaiā, kite aumārama. Tu te ngana, tu kamarama, te tuhi te raarama, tē nei tātou enohomataara nei. Eronga, waka iriake, kirunga, tu turo, whetei waka maua, kia teina. Haumie, huiye. Let us, by way of layperson's translation, eti whanau, let us strive and seek the enlightenment, peace and togetherness of tānei. Although there may be tensions, although there may be ructions, there may be even conflict in the room, let us always be beneath the essence of peace and togetherness. Are we united in this? Kia ora.
Hello there. Tooranga, this is the first time you get to vote for a new council in half a decade. And one of these people behind me are going to be your next mayor. Probably there is one candidate who couldn't make it. It could be him, it could be one of them. Tonight we get to hear from them on It's in the Ballot.
Well, that was very abruptly changed onto me and we got to show off the audience there, Nick. Yeah. No, 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 because we don't have to go for the opening credits again. But yes, timing everything and then suddenly the one person decides to tutu with it. But yes, yes, tonight, welcome to It's in the Ballot. And yes, it wasn't quite the exact start I wanted to be on there. This is our biggest candidate numbers we've had here. We've got 14 out of 15 meral candidates for the Tooranga City Council election. And we're going to hear from all of them tonight. And let's kick off with the opening statements, starting with Greg.
One minute, is that right?
One minute.
One minute, thank you. Yes, good evening everybody, my name's Greg Brownless. I'm committed to the Tooranga community and its future and I've lived here since 1986. At one stage, I donated my successful business to the community and we've contributed several million dollars to various organisations here. I believe that those who've done well should give back and that's why I strongly oppose subsidising development through rates. I think that developers and indeed all of us have to pay our fair share as the city grows. I was Tooranga's last full-term mayor and I stood up for our city to central government, not always successfully, we had a number of projects cancelled due to government's change of mind. I did prioritise essential infrastructure. We delivered critical water, sewerage, flooding and transport airport projects. Our debts doubled recently and I believe that a lot of the spending for that has been poorly targeted. It's forecast to treble by 10 years' time. And despite a 53% rates increase, we've only seen a lot of disruption and a cycle wave that I think is plain dangerous, both to cyclists and for cars. I believe that I have the experience to be able to turn things around immediately and with your support, I believe we can secure Tooranga's future and preserve our democracy. So if I can ask you to vote for me for responsible leadership, thank you.
Okay, next up Aurel.
Good evening everybody, my name is Aurel Braguta. For the last 21 years, Tooranga has been my home. And during this time, I watched Tooranga grow and develop. But at the same time, I witnessed the vast amount of wasteful spending that this council is having. And I don't believe the increased rates and more borrowing is the way for the future of our city. And my message for my campaign is very simple, cut the wasteful spending. If we want to move our city forward, we need to cut spending. And when I'm talking about cutting the spendings, I'm not talking about not investing in our infrastructure, in our community and I'm talking about stop the red tape, the bureaucracy and just wasting in the council and everywhere around us. So my message is stop the wasteful spending.
Just to let you know, your time has expired. Okay, next up Jos.
Good evening everybody, Jos Nagels here. I've been in Tooranga now for 48 years and I've witnessed a great deal of change here in Tooranga. My background has been civil engineering mainly and other jobs as well. I've worked on the Carmar tunnel, I've done traffic engineering, I've done road engineering, stormwater sewer, done the whole lot. And so I know what needs a city has. And Tooranga has now grown to the point where we've got to move into the 21st century rather than from the 60s, rather than the present trajectory of the 1960s, which is leading us to Auckland's nightmare, we're just doing a repeat of Auckland's nightmare. And as my motto says, we need visionary leadership, not repeatership. And the visionary leadership will lead us to 21st century methodology and technologies which will benefit every single one in body in Tooranga. And that will be meaning trams, transit, rail, multimodal.
Thank you for that, next up Douglas.
Doug? Sorry, I've got, yeah, hold on, yep, go ahead.
Kia ora kouta, Doug Owens is my name. Owens has been in this place, our place for 70 years now. And we know our way around. Look, just to cut to the chase, the commissioners have been brought in here under false pretences, in my opinion. They've managed to get the city under their control, but I don't think it's under our control. And they've levelled a massive challenge for this new council. And the leadership that I'm offering you is simply knowledge, experience, know-how and no nonsense. And I've been around the traps for a long time in local government. I've had 40, 50 years in business, I know how to follow the money and that's what we've got to do. Because there isn't any, well certainly not enough for the 4.9 billion wish lists the commissioners have left us. The LTP is not fit for purpose. I'm ready for it, thank you very much.
Thank you for that, next up Andrew.
Kia ora Tooranga, my name is Andrew Kai and I've been starting off all of these much the same. Not even an appeal to vote, just an appeal to try and encourage you what to vote for. Tooranga is a city that cannot afford itself and that is our number one problem going forward. It doesn't really matter what you want aside of that. If you want better roads or better public transport or more community services or your parks looked after, it all boils back to the same thing. How are we going to pay for it? So Tooranga has transitioned from a town into a city. And when you make that transition, you have to start to do city things so that you can pay for yourself. And Tooranga has not done those things. So not even an appeal to vote for me, just an appeal to vote. Whoever you vote for, you must ask them, how are you going to grow Tooranga to pay for itself? Thank you for your time, I've been Andrew Kai.
Thank you for that, next up Donna.
Kia ora, my name's Donna Hannah and I stand for three things. Ratepayers, because I believe that for a very, very long time, ratepayers haven't been getting good money. Good spends, good money and actually good investment, all the way down the line. We've kind of been a little bit shafted, alright? So I stand for the ratepayers, accountability. When there's an overrun and overspend, I want to know why, what happened, what caused it? And some accountability by someone else, what caused this overspend? And then, you know, front up, because I think what's been happening is ratepayers generally have not had access to that information. The final one that I stand for is viability. We've got to make our future Tooranga city viable. We're not viable right now. We've got a huge debt and based on the LTP, it's going to get worse. That's not okay, we need to make it work. Let's do this, thank you.
Next up Ria.
Kia ora tato, my name is Ria Hall. I'm born and bred Tooranga Moana, educated here, Moanga Tapu School, Tooranga Intermediate, Tooranga Girls College, raising my family here. My two youngest go to Beestar, Ongatai Road, Nautu Muaitei. And my big boy, he's just turned five, he attends my old school, Moanga Tapu School. And so the reason that I'm standing, other than for my own children, is also for all of your tamareki and all of your mokupuna. Because Tooranga deserves progressive, forward-looking, young, youthful, energetic leadership that can take the city into a place that it's never been to before, that we've never experienced in all the iterations of council. So I propose that as my value proposition this evening. Further to that, I have a background in political science. I studied at the University of Waikato, I'm currently finishing my Master of Regional Development. I'm a business owner, I have extensive governance experience. And I'm all about collaboration, group connection and connectivity. Ria Hall is my name, thank you for your audience.
Thank you for that, next up John. John.
Good evening, my name's John Robson. It's often been said that a vision without a plan is a broken promise and often what you'll hear is people talking about what they see in the future. But without a plan, that will never happen. And more importantly, that plan has to be viable. And in this respect, the plan that has been gifted by the commission to the city is not viable. So the first thing that a new council has to do is to revisit that plan. My wish, not vision, my wish is a city that is affordable and attractive, that is economically and environmentally sustainable. More importantly, it's a city built of the community, by the community, for the community, not of the commission, by the commission, for the developers, thank you very much.
I just want to check, is Anthony here? He doesn't look like he's on my panel. Anthony got out? No? Oh, gave her these apologies there as well, Tim.
Good evening, I'm Dr Tim Mulby, I'm an engineer, born and raised in Tooranga, worked overseas and then came back. So I've been living back here for 20 years and I've watched Tooranga and I thought, surely someone's going to step up and start fixing this mess. But nobody stepped up, so I thought, well, maybe I'm that somebody. So what I would like to do, three simple things really, we need to cut council spending. Spend carefully and wisely and concentrate on the basics, which is water, roads and facilities. We've got too much wasted spending, too many vanity projects, too much money that's not being spent effectively. The second thing I would do is we have to reorganise council. We can't get anywhere with the current council organisation. We have to go in for a deep dive, review everything and everybody in there and then try and restructure the council through the chief executive, of course. The third thing I would like to do is come back to the community, we need to talk about the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, next up Chubbly.
Thank you, I'm Chudley Haggart and this mic seems a bit dead, oh no, it's fine. Yes, well, first of all, thank you all for coming along tonight and meeting people in person. It makes a big difference to us as well as you being able to spread the word around the community. You've heard what a lot of the other candidates have said and I concur exactly. We have got major problems in this city. We need a council that's led by a mayor who will make sure that the ratepayers are looked after and these unsustainable projects get looked at again. But that's not only what needs to be done. The Tooranga City Council is a basket case, it's full of people who are not fit for purpose and there are so many things that are going wrong. There is so much dysfunction downtown and it needs to be sorted. What Jim said just a moment ago is so true and I would like a leader to lead you.
Okay, next up Tanya. A little bit nervous there, a little bit nervous.
Oh yeah, petrified.
It's alright, our fire's not that too hot.
Hi, I'm Tanya and I'm running for mayor and for councillor for the Matau Otumutai ward. Now, I grew up in the bay, I was educated at Waikato and then I went on to an international, national career as a financial analyst in corporate. In 1998, we came back to the bay. We bought our first business, Harrington's nightclub and we started bringing up our small family and I became an active part of the arts community. We have watched Tooranga grow from a small seaside retirement community to an emerging city, a vibrant emerging city. But there's a little bit of an issue, because we sort of still identify as a quite large small town in New Zealand. And small town New Zealand does not scale up well. We need to embrace becoming a city. We need to grow up to the vibrant, exciting city that we can be and I would love to help you get there.
Next up Tina.
Kia ora kouta, my name's Tina Salisbury and I am running to put our people and progress over politics. My four priorities are traffic, to deal with our gridlock and starting with sources of congestion, to unlock housing through innovation and looking at lots of outside-the-box thinking. I think if we keep doing the same thing, we're going to keep getting the same results. The fourth thing that I'm standing on is effective engagement with our people. I think it's really important that we restore some of the participation to our people and communities to be able to make decisions about things that affect them in their place. I've worked in corporate, self-employed, in governance, I'm a team player and a system changer. I look forward to leading the team with fresh ideas to our old problems, with effective and inclusive engagement, with forward-thinking leadership, progressing our city forward with a steady hand, thank you.
And next up Mahi.
Good evening Tooranga, today or this next month, you're making a big decision. Do we go back to the past and the ineffective and dysfunctional council? Or do we focus on the future? I want a positive future for the city. We're in an exciting position, we've started to see the city rise and I want to deliver the best small city in New Zealand. How am I going to do it? I'm going to use my financial and accounting background to make sure we get value for money for our spending. I'm going to work as a team, I've been very successful in my life working as a team and that's what I will do with the council around the table and the wider community to get together and deliver for the city. What we've seen is plans and feasibility studies but not seen delivery. That's what I will do for the city, I will deliver, thank you.
Okay, and the questions we think you'll be asking after watching today's show, let's bring them up. Which meral, well, which candidate can... Please adjust the shot for the TV, is what Stacey just said. Okay, so which meral, yeah, which candidate can wear their mural chains while catching a bay bus service to get them from their home to the council chambers? Number two, which candidate will spend more money on their campaign than It's in the Ballot's total production costs for the Tooranga City Council's elections? And who, from the Q and A with Jack Tain's production team, is watching from home in Kognito to find out who's to interview next? Considering that's up to many different things we definitely know on this show or I think we've just hit out on a few different spoilers. So this is the first round here for the questions. Each candidate picks a box number and then they answer the question that's in the box. Now, each candidate has been given two button cards and one defer card. If a candidate who hasn't picked a box but another candidate has picked a box and they want to button with their answer, they can use their button card. Maximum two buttons per question, otherwise we'll be here all night long. And if you have a question that's a bit too hairy and don't want to sit there and use it, they can use their defer card and give it to another candidate. So that's be the best way to explain how things go from there. And we've got Paul Barlow here, from Paul, the other one who is our question host. Go ahead, well then, can you play, oh.
Swap that across.
Yep, sweet, that's alright, okay, I wasn't expecting that, it could be an off-camera interruption. So Paul, all the boxes are secured?
All the boxes are there.
Are there, god, that sounds, that sounds...
I figured it was easier to leave them a little open because we have so many candidates, so many questions. You don't want me filling in time, ripping pieces off. I know, I know.
So Ria, you get to pick up the first box. What box number?
Let's go box number 14 please.
Number 14? Right at the back here. Alright, this is question A B for the Orbacs. In regards to Plan 33, change for residential density around the city, where do you stand on these changes?
Great question.
Not mine, I can't take credit.
I am into the idea of enabling housing because we are currently in a housing shortage. We're around about 6,000 to 8,000 homes short. And so I'm interested in enabling and unlocking opportunities for housing. However that looks, whether that's through intensification, through speaking with our communities around what they would like, intensification is an option. But of course, greenfields should be an option. We don't have a lot of land left, well, we don't have any land left at the minute. So unlocking opportunities in those spaces is incredibly important because greenfields will deliver short to medium term outcomes, whereas intensification is the long term, it's the long game. So all in all, I'm very supportive of enabling housing.
Okay, Chubbly, what box number? So for those at home, it's box number five.
I don't even have to stand up for this, it's brilliant. Thank you, I appreciate it as a fat person. This is question number C for CAT. Aotearoa in New Zealand has a population represented by over 15,000 ethnicities, cultures and social identities. Studies have shown that diverse and inclusive societies both increase wellbeing and economic growth. How would you actively improve Tooranga Moana's sense of celebration of its diverse society?
I don't really think it's up to me, I think it's those communities. And I think it's the strength of those communities and how they are treated by council. All of those communities you mentioned and all the different ethnic groups should be able to approach council and all should be treated exactly the same. But it's those groups, those groups within the community that are the strength of the community. It's not up to council or the mayor to tell these groups what they should and shouldn't be doing. They should make up a plan of their own, come to council and council's job is to make sure that they're not stopped in any way from doing it. So that's what I would do, I would make sure that my council was open to any suggestion from any community and everybody was treated the same.
Okay, next up Donna.
Box number 16 please.
You're going to make me walk, all the way down to, yeah, the halfway point.
Somewhere along the table.
Fine, this is question Q for Queen. Do you support the proposed CBD stadium?
Short answer is no, not right now. I don't believe we should be doing any excessive spending on anything until we know we've got the money. Sorry, I work on, if I've got the budget, that's what I can spend. If there's no budget, I can't spend the money. Where are we going to get the money from? I'm not increasing ratepayers' rates so we can cover this. There has to be another way. I'm open to looking at other proposals to see if we can attach ourselves to different organisations who might be able to front up and come up with some cash. But I'm sure as heck not going to put this on the ratepayer. The ratepayer deserves value for money and that only identifies a select group of people who actually get the benefit, so not at this stage, thank you.
Next up Tim, what box number?
Box 13 please. Don't tell me you've lost it.
Yeah, I'll tell you I've lost it, pick another one.
No, come on, look harder, come on, look harder, come on man.
I'm already looking, I'm looking.
What kind of show is this?
One with far, far too many boxes. Way too many boxes.
Right, well what about 12?
12 I can definitely do.
Okay, 12 it is, 12 it is.
Alright. Alright, this is question S for Sally. Do you support a museum? Do you support a museum for Tooranga City?
Not in the current form. I don't support a museum in the civic centre. We do have some very good facilities that could be used for a museum. We've got the Elms or the old Mission House. We've got the old warehouses down by the harbour. But I think the prime place to put a museum is actually the historic village. I think that's a very underutilised place. To me, it's a fantastic resource, particularly if you could have live activities in the various shops and so on. We do have the rock shop, there's the radio, there's a few other very interesting things going on. But that's the sort of thing people would be much more interested than just an old-fashioned museum. So I'm opposed to the museum at the civic centre, but I think we could do something very interesting for Taoranga. Thank you.
And just some useless information, we are 523 kilometres away from Tipapa in Wellington. Okay, Gre, what box number?
Oh, one.
Yes, I can do one. Right, this is P for Paul. Brilliant name, everybody should have it. Do you support removing the racecourse for building more housing or a new hospital?
Well, that's an easy answer. It's, the racecourse is actually owned by the government, so it's entirely their decision. I don't know how on earth council got involved in that. There was first of all, talk of turning it into housing. But of course, because of the constricted nature of the transport link through Gretan, that simply can't happen. I think if the government wishes to pursue it for a hospital, that's up to them. But I also think that the green space around the city should be treasured and not built over. And that applies to other parks and reserves that people have had their eye on as well. You have green space which allows intensification around it, not on it. Thank you.
Okay, Joss, what box number?
Yeah.
I'm number seven.
Go for box number seven for those at home and somehow we've got to get a microphone. Right, seven. This is question I, Indigo. If for the last four years Taoranga had been run by a skeleton crew who were able to successfully push through projects that will supposedly have long-term benefits for the city, why do we need to pay for 11 councillors to fill seats when it's been proven that less people can achieve the tasks required for the job?
Well, there's four commissioners. They work about two to four days a week, so they're part-time. The annual bill for the commissioners is round about 1.2 million. And for that same price, we can have 11 councillors and a mayor, which gives a much better representation of the city and the average citizen. And there's a lot more ideas coming through that can be discussed for the benefit of the city. So the mayors, I mean, the commissioners have had a corporate agenda and they have just pushed through their ideas. Whereas when you've got a good council, unified and a unified strategy to move forward to 20th century technologies for the city which benefit everybody, I think that's a more progressive way than having four commissioners with a fixed agenda and a very limited perspective.
And we do have button from Tim. I would just like to mention with this new council, there will be 10, but yes, there were 11 in the old council. So, oh, nine, oh, 10 members in total, but yes, nine plus, nine councillors.
Nine councillors and one mayor. I'd like to butt into that. Look, we basically had a dictatorship for the last five years. We've had commissioners who pretend to listen but don't, pretend to consult but don't. Commissioners who make deals, backroom deals with the developers and back business, but don't listen to the people of Taoranga. What Taoranga wants, or what I want for Taoranga is democracy, where the elected members actually listen to our community and take on board what the community wants. The best things for Taoranga come up from the community to the council, not from the council down on top of the community. Thank you.
And button from Gre.
Yes, I disagree with part of the premise of that statement that the commissioners are getting things done that the people want. I don't think that's necessarily the case at all. And there is a price to pay for democracy and a price to pay for not having democracy. And we've been paying that over the last few years. I also want to correct the idea that somehow the majority of the population are in favour of having commissioners. Because the council's own survey, which has not been reported in the media, but you can read it in their website, 21% are satisfied with the commissioner's job and 16% think they're okay on financial management. I think that's pretty bad, that's something that an elected council could easily beat. Thank you.
Next up, Tanya. Question D for Dog. In recent years, violence directed toward Aotearoa and in this case, Taoranga Moana's LGBTQAI community has increased, most notably with the destruction of our community's Rainbow Youth Facility in an attack. How would you create a Taoranga Moana that's actively promoting an appreciation of diverse communities?
Okay. First of all, I've got to say that the awful violence that we've seen towards the LGBTQAI community is unfathomable to me. I don't understand it. I don't understand that somebody could feel so threatened and fearful that they have to hit out violently at people who are other to them. It shows a complete lack of self-confidence and self-awareness. So we could ameliorate it by creating spaces, safe spaces for our people for, and giving them support through the council. That's some of the small things we can do. But I think the most important thing we can do as a council is to demonstrate to everyone it is normal and natural and good to be other. We can celebrate this in lots of different ways with structures, with artwork, with events. To demonstrate to the people that it's normal and nice to be violent to others, that it's not, they're out of step and they need to take a second look at themselves.
Next up, Tina. What box number? For those at home, it's 25. All right, this is question O for, oh my God, look over there. Are you prepared to support unpopular but necessary levels of rates increases in order to ensure the financial viability of the council instead of voting for lower rates increases in the interest of your own reelection prospects at the expense of future councils being able to fund infrastructure maintenance and upgrades?
So one of the reasons that I think we are in the situation that we're in right now is because strategic and brave decisions were not made by previous councils and we can't keep deferring those decisions. And I think that's part of the reason we're in the crisis we're in right now. So I do intend to find more frugal and efficient ways with our budget exploring means to make our revenue go further. I will leave no stone unturned to find options to keep... I will leave no stone unturned to find options to keep moving forward with our maintenance and ongoing infrastructure work while limiting the cost of new infrastructure for growth on our current ratepayers. It would be unwise to commit to keeping our rates increases low when we have so much work still to be done as a city. I mean, if the roof is leaking, we need to find ways to fix it, but we need to do it in a way that's affordable.
Oriel. Yep, Sam. Sorry, we have button from John first.
Tina made reference to decisions that hadn't been made in the past and I'm going to make reference to two particular decisions that were made that largely led to our problems today. One of those decisions was to favour commercial property investors and not have a rates differential in the city like all the other major cities had. That cost the city in revenue $700 million and you can fix a leaky roof with $700 million and possibly have some change. The other decision that was made previously by previous councils was to favour developers in a way that no other city in New Zealand does. And the net result of the way Taoranga collects development contributions from developers is higher land prices, larger developer profits, more expensive housing and bigger debts for the ratepayer. If those two decisions hadn't been made in the past, the city would be so much better off. Thank you.
Okay, what box number?
Closest to you, Robert, number two?
Number two. Thank you. All right, this is A C for air conditioning. What is your position on mana fenua representation on Taoranga City Council?
A C.
A C.
Anyone who is representing a specific group or community should be democratically elected. And I don't believe that one group should have special rights or advantages when it comes to being elected. So I think we should democratically elect anyone to represent any group. Thank you.
Um, I think you might have to, you might have to grab the remote. Sorry, this is what happens when something goes wrong live. Andrew, you're up next.
15, please, I think I see that there.
You do. All right, this is question R for something that begins with R, like a pirate. All right. What qualifications do you hold that would qualify for you for mayor? And what skills have you got that ensures you will perform well as mayor? Can you please give examples?
I am a physiotherapist by trade. I got into physiotherapy because I care about health and wellbeing and I believe it's given me some excellent transferable skills that will allow me to serve the city well and be your mayor. And they are lovely sitting over my shoulders. Vision, communication and accountability and on top of that, relationship building. Vision, if you go to a health professional, if you go to your physio, you want them to have a vision for you, usually that you get better, a plan. So I'm pretty good at the planning side. The communication side of it, we have to get information out of you. I have to get you to open up, I have to find out about your life and I have to facilitate conversation that you are comfortable partaking in. And I think that's an excellent skill for a councillor. And accountability, if I set a plan that we're going to get you better in 12 weeks, I don't wait until the end of that 12 weeks to test that we're hitting our targets. I will measure along the way to make sure that we are still in the right direction. Lastly, relationship building. There aren't many professions in the world where within 10 minutes of meeting them, you might have your shirt off laying face down on the table. And so to do that, I have to make people comfortable with me. And relationships, communication, accountability and vision, I believe, are skills you want from your councillor. Thank you.
Okay, we have two buttons. We'll kick off with Donna because you're first.
Okay, so what qualifications do I have? I'm an adult, I voted before. Number one, okay. Number two, I think that as a ratepayer, as an adult, you've worked inside your budget. You've got your accountability to make sure you stay inside your budget. You've got a mortgage that makes sure you stay inside your budget. There are so many things that we do on a daily basis about accountability, paying our rates, making sure we're viable so we can afford groceries. That to me is just upscaling. We are upscaling what we want to do. We know we don't go out and buy a brand new car when we haven't got the money in the bank and we've got no income to support that. We know that we don't go and mortgage and get ourselves another house if we haven't got any income to support that. So what I'm saying is we have to be accountable for what we are doing with our funds. And saying that, I've got three bachelor's degree, one in business management, one in information systems and one in psychology. So I pretty much know my way around working with people. Thank you.
And Mahi.
Good evening. I just wanted to come in on this one. Obviously, everyone knows me as a very successful rower, but I wanted to explain some of the other things that I have done in my life alongside that. So I have a BCOM and a graduate diploma of commerce in accounting, commercial law and IT. I'm a lifelong learner, I'm an accountant and also a registered financial advisor. I'm a director, trustee, business owner, one of New Zealand's most successful sportsmen and a strong advocate for elite athletes in this country as co-chair of the Athletes Cooperative. I currently work at Forsyth Bar and have worked in insolvency and advisory in the past. I understand the difference between governance and management and have learnt how to lead from spending time with some of this country's greatest leaders. I believe in accountability, transparency and I will deliver for this, for you, the ratepayers and voters. Thank you.
And thank you for bearing us with there with the great fun part of technical difficulties and funds that go over there. John, you're up next, what box number?
Number three. Perfect. I like these candidates. This is Jay for, Jesus Christ, these guys are awesome. Right, yes or no, do you support the establishment of Maori wards? Do you support the Treaty of Waiteangi and why?
Okay, answer to number one, no. And the reasons will be evident when the Weekend Sun and the Baya Plenty Times publish my response to Alicia's four questions, but very quickly, they are, one, Maori elected from people on the Maori roll cannot represent all Maori in Taoranga and there's a risk they may claim to do so or may be seen to do so. Another better option, I think, is to move all councillors to an at-large with an STV voting system and focus on dealing with the 17 hapu in the city through a better engagement with Taorangapu. So using their systems. Now, coming on to the Treaty of Waiteangi, I don't understand the question, do you support it? Different people have different interpretations of it. There is a massive debate happening in this country. In short, my view of the treaty is very simple. The first clause is about sovereignty, the second clause is about property rights and the third clause is about equality. Thank you.
Okay, Mahi. What box number? We haven't got box 30 there, have we? 30? 3-0 or 1-3?
Yeah, 30.
We haven't got 30 in there, we only got 28 when that was done. I was expecting all 15 candidates. So we saved ourselves some having to load two boxes.
28 then.
Okay. But yes, that was a unique thing to the show that, you know, the uniqueness of this show. All right, this is question V for volumus. What is your strategic vision for Taoranga City? I.e. what will the city look like in 10 to 15 years' time? V for Vera. Victor. Oh, Victor, sorry. I've got the wrong question on this one. I know, I thought we said B for Brava. No, V for Victor. Oh, good. Very volumus. So many V words out there. Yes, we're ready.
So what is my strategic vision for Taoranga City? It's New Zealand's best small city. What does that mean? An attractive, vibrant city where everyone that comes here has an affordable home to live in. We have a strong economy where we support business to grow and encourage other businesses to come here. So everyone has a job. No traffic and transport issues so people can move around freely. A can-do city that people look to as an example of what can be achieved when we work together as a council and community. Thank you.
And we have button from Joss.
The vision of Taoranga City may be beyond our control. We've got a climate crisis which 10% of people don't believe in, but it's going to affect every one of us in the city. And the way to counter it is to mitigate, bring mitigating emissions. 80% of Taoranga's emissions are through transport and the easiest way to change that is to reform our transport network. And if we reform our transport network, that will transform the city into a 20th century place. Now, in doing that, we create a better community, ease of access, employment opportunities, easier access to employment and to homes, to accommodation. So that really translates across the whole city to benefit everybody. So that's my sort of vision and Taoranga City's plan... They do all the roads, so it's a failure before they even start.
You all right?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Thanks, just to make sure everyone's awake.
That's good. Um, okay, the strategic vision, I want to focus on my, uh, my attention on the next four years first, but my strategic vision is to set a precedent for this council in reducing wasteful costs, increasing productivity and improving efficiency. Once we achieve this, then there is nothing that we cannot do. So reduce the wasteful spending first. So, thank you.
Okay, Doug, what box number? Right, this is question H for helicopter. What measures would you take to reduce the impact of environmental pollutants on the hapu living in the Fariroa Marae?
Oh, Fariroa, my favourite place of all time. I was washed up on the beach when I was 10 years old in my P class. I was taken into that marae and given a cup of tea, sat down and handed the phone. I rang up my dad and said, Dad, I've been washed up on the beach. And he called somebody and he came over in a boat and picked me up. So Fariroa is a very special place in my mind. And what's more, I have spoken at length with people about this problem. And, um, the dust problem and Mount Wurkano is just disgraceful anyway. You know, I mean, uh, the regional council, which I had to, to, uh, served two terms on, started looking at that issue only about 10 years ago. Well, I mean, the horse is bolder. Um, the firt works are there. That's a building that's not fit for purpose anymore, it's actually an asbestos building. Um, we don't know where the fertilizers are, but it can. So there are solutions and we will find them.
Okay, we have button from Ria.
Just to add to Doug's washing up on shore at Fariroa, what a lucky place for you to, to arrive. Um, in terms of Fariroa and the hapu there in Tukuku, there are multiple ways that we can reduce harm upon our whanau there. One of them is that we know that councils can push through zone changes which will restrict new consents, but it's mostly about working together and finding solutions with Fariroa and with Mount Residence about how best to provide safe, air-free uh, from pollutants for current and future generations. With existing industry on an exit strategy which should include a reduction in pollutants and with regional council about utilizing the combined suite of powers and resources that those combined councils have. Kia ora.
Okay, Joss, what box number? Yes, it is, eight is still here. This is question A for Aporo, Apple. What will you be doing to contribute to the need for affordable parking for both city workers and university students?
That's interesting. Um, for the past sixty, for the past sixty years, our, our cities have been designed for cars. And that's lead on question for cars. Now, of course, in a modern city would have student accommodation close to their facilities. And with multimodal transport, there's not such a need to devote great areas to car parking. Because car parking is a very expensive way of using, utilizing space in the city. We're much better off to look at better models, particularly from overseas. And you only just have to go across to Australia. But New Zealand has fallen into the trap of the Americanism where you've got unbridled resources and lots of land, and that is no longer the case. We have limited resources and we've got to use them wisely and be accountable in our expenditure for them and really plan ahead for the future generations because we're going to do it. And the future is really hard to expect as well.
And we have a button from Tina.
Parking is a gnarly and complex issue in a compact city like Tooranga. I think one of the things that I would do is a feasibility study for students and workers looking at potentially subsidized parking rates. Provide safe options for bike parking and reliable and consistent bus services. Explore park and ride shuttles so students don't have to park in the city and hospitality staff have a safe way to get back to their cars after dark. Uh, I would look at exploring initiatives for car pools and incentivizing ride share to reduce the number of vehicles needing to park in the CBD. Explore T3 discounts for carpoolers in public parking buildings. I think we need to provide for some of the immediate needs that we have right now while we're delivering longer-term transportation improvements.
Okay, next box number. Donna, what box number is it?
Um, what's that one over there, fourteen? Yeah.
Oh, that's awkward. All right, this is question Y for, yes, this is the question. What governance experience do you have excluding previous elected member experience in politics? And what formal government, governance education have you done? For example, the IOD Institute of Directors Director Course.
Okay, so, uh, for a very long time, I have been very active in my community and I volunteer over and above the work that I do. So I actually sit on the board of a number of, uh, community organizations in the governance role. Uh, one of them being St John's Area Committee. Uh, and we investigate what we're going to do, uh, with youth, et cetera. And so I've been on those boards for a while now. Um, I've explored, uh, how that works with the actual people. So, uh, an example here is as mayor and as councillor's, our interaction goes through the CEO, all right? We cannot go to a, uh, staff member of the district council or the council and say, what are you doing every day? Uh, but we can make the CEO accountable for what's actually going on. And that's our way to actually activate that. Now, that sounds crazy, but that's how it works. We have a one point of contact, we can ask for feasibility studies, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Greek, what box number? Yes, I know, we don't muck around here.
Thank you.
I don't know, these people are very good for question hosts. Lots of practice. Right, this is question AA for Automobile Association? Or Alcoholics Anonymous? All of the above. Um, I have recently visited Gisborne, not me personally, uh, and had the pleasure of eating at Tahu Restaurant, which sits atop the new Midway Surf Club. Would you consider allowing licenses for the Mount and Papamoa Surf Clubs to do the same? Why or why not?
Well, I would consider it, but I think we've got to take in the wider view of the community in the area that actually also support the surf club. So, for example, a restaurant or something near the surf club might not be keen that, um, that there was a business competing with them set up. I'd also, um, want to know from the surf club that they were happy to run a restaurant. In other words, a business. And it isn't all about making money, it's often about losing money as well, especially under the current environment. So yes, I would consider it, but I think there is a lot more to it than just saying yes or no. Thank you.
Next up, Doug, what box number?
Is this my second box?
Yes. We don't muck around here, it's in the ballot. We'll be as quick as Parliament passing legislation under urgency. Number twenty. All right, this is question L for, let's ask this question. Do you support the Cameron Road Stage Two upgrade proposal in its current form? If not, what changes would you like to see?
Oh, gosh. Well, we've just been through the first stage, haven't we? Did we enjoy that? No. Um, well, what I heard at the beginning of, when all this started was that
Hold your mic up a bit higher.
Through the, through the COVID thing, uh, the government gave the council 34 million. And they put that towards Cameron Road. I don't know what it cost in the end, but it was a little more than 34 million. So, look, I can't answer that question, I don't know enough about Stage Two, I haven't been briefed on it. Um, I'm not sure what they're going to do, but enough's enough. I mean, the, how, if it's going to improve Cameron Road, well, let's prove it to us. But Cameron Road, all they did was reinstate the bike lanes that were already there. Because I used to ride my bike, the Primus Gob, on those bike lanes and then they took them away. Well, during that period, everybody stopped riding bikes. On those bike lanes? No. So, look, my mind is open, that's all I can say.
Okay, we have two buttons, first Donna.
Okay, do I support it? Absolutely not. Uh, it's supposed to be $20 million of ratepayers' money. They've already saying that they're going to blow that out to about 80 million. And the reality is, where's your bang for buck? That road works perfectly fine as it is. What are they going to do that's going to make more traffic go through it? Nothing. It's money that doesn't need to be spent. We've spent enough on the money, on the road that we've got. It's not fit for purpose. I literally drove that today because I thought, you know what? I'll just have a look and see how many bikes use this road. Literally, I saw five on bikes, the whole length of Cameron Road. Those traffic lights make you wait a very long time. Two of them actually were riding on the footpath. So they weren't even using the bike lanes. And I was actually there while the schools were coming out. None of the kids were using the bikes. So I tell you what, when I grew up in Tooranga, when I was going to the girls' college, we used bikes, we were riding six abreast, we did not have a bike lane. We do not need to spend that kind of money on roading. Thank you.
Um, I spoke with the, with the person that works for, uh, for the council on this project on Cameron Road. And he told me that the amount of wasted time and money on this road is unbelievable. He, he comes from the, from the private sector, works for over a year for the council. And, uh, yeah, he, he confirmed this. And that, that's exactly why I'm standing for this, uh, position. So I can bring a business approach to time management and resource management. Uh, we have to stop the waste and we have to speed up all this project that we are working on. How can everything that council does is three times more expensive than, than, uh, the private sector and takes seven times longer to accomplish. We, we have to stop and stop this, it's, it's crazy. So thank you.
Uh, next up, Mahi, what box number? All right, uh, we, we've had two buttons on that question. Have we still got five? I have six. Right, this is K for ketamine. I thought you were going to use kiwi fruit because of the area. I was thinking of the drag queen. Much easier. Given the well-established evidence globally and within New Zealand that congestion is increased when more and bigger roads are built and also that congestion is bad for the economy, including wages, what policies would you support to improve the mobility of residents around Tooranga City?
Uh, thank you. Um, I believe in solving the bottlenecks of Tooranga, such as Tarat Road. We actually have a lot of very good roads, but there are too many bottlenecks. Previous councils have consulted and planned, but as we, um, will see, this council will start delivering and free up the city. We also need to focus on giving people options for convenient and efficient public transport, making it an option to get out of your car. It's very important if we have public transport options, that it's a better option than your car and so then you'll want to use it. That's what I believe in, will deliver for Tooranga.
And a button from Joss? Uh, we've got Andrew first.
Um, kind of tagging into the last one as well, um, I hate congestion. I really do, I lived in Melbourne and one of my journeys for work that I will never do again was an hour and it is such a waste of time and life and everything. I absolutely detest traffic. That being said, uh, Copenhagen now has 69% of its, uh, commuter traffic via cycle. That didn't happen overnight. It started by building cycle lanes that no one used. And eventually people start using them. See, people will do what is easiest. And we have spent 50 years making sure the road and personal car is the easiest. And that's what everyone does. Fair enough. But we are due for 50,000 people in the next 25 years. At our averages, that is 30,000 homes. At 1.5 cars per home, uh, that's 40,000 cars. That's enough. It's about 130 kilometres, that's about enough to stretch from here to Mahi's house in Cambridge and all the way and halfway back again. We are not going to fit those cars on our roads. We must find another way to get around Tooranga. Thank you.
Go ahead, it may be, we should have a challenge to see if it can stretch to my house as well.
Yes, there is another way. Tooranga is the most car-dependent city in New Zealand. And there's, that's not a, a thing to be proud about. We can find other ways and there are solutions in hand. I've got the ideas and the way to fund them and they are ways that will work. And it won't cost us any more because we are spending billions on roads and if we do Tarat Road, you'll just get a bodily change. Needs a better plan than the traditional approach of the 60, 1960s. Multimodal transport, as I've said before, will, is the way of the future. It will bring much easier access to housing, convenience. It's actually freedom, you can be free of your car and you only use your car when you need it. So the roads will be a lot less crowded. The savings to the economy will, can be enormous. Rail could take 30% of our fossil fuel bill away, which is, incidentally, $11 billion a year or $21 million a week. 350 million into infrastructure like rail.
Uh, Tim, what box number? Tim?
Oh, me, right.
There's sleep in the chair there.
Um, let's just do the closest one, let's give the guy an easy task. Come on, we don't, we don't want to overwork you.
Oh God, I'm from Auckland, I was just sitting going, an hour in traffic, my God, that sounds amazing.
So, what have we got?
Right, this is question G for, you seem like a good guy making me not move too much. Will you commit to a line-by-line audit similar to what the national government said it was going to do in order to cut wastage over spending and taxpayer rates?
I wouldn't do it the same way. I think we do need to go through a lot of the projects that the commissioners have set in place. Some of them we can scrap, some of them we can change, some of them we're stuck with because they're too far gone. Um, we do need to have a very good look at the projects that are committed currently. What is also very important to me is to actually go and look at the council itself, the organisation. It's bloated, top-heavy, ineffective, it's not giving us value for money. And I think that's really the key to saving money for the ratepayers. We have to get into the council organisation and make it more effective, more efficient and cut out all this waste. Get rid of the too many managers, get, and bring some competency back into the council. Thank you.
And we have button from, uh, was it Chudley?
Yes, it's Chudley, yeah. Um, yeah, look, that's only part of the problem. Committing to a line-by-line audit is only half the problem. You've got to find out why those decisions were made, who made them, who's competent in making them and who's incompetent about making them. Because as I said before, the council downtown is a basket case. I don't know how we get anything done. Some of the remarks that have been made here are more than true about what's going on. So to have a firm foundation that the city can grow forward from, we have to have a unified council, we have to have somebody who's a good leader and somebody that can make sure that council staff understand what they need to do for the ratepayers, not for council staff. So there needs to be a big shake-up and the audit is only the start.
Okay, next, um, person, John, what box number?
All right, this is question E for everything. The most vibrant and successful cities on earth have grown societally and economically in part through abandoning concepts of homogenous societies and embracing the diversity of our populations. Aotearoa in New Zealand has a population represented by over 1,500 ethnicities, cultures and social identities. How would you grow Taoranga Moana through actively celebrating all peoples who call our city home?
I spent a bit of time looking at this issue because it's a claim that started with a report by McKinsey, interestingly enough, a management consultant's, and that was my profession. And there's a big question about whether there's a causality here or a correlation. It may be that successful cities attract diverse numbers of people. And when you go and look at successful cities, you see an enormous amount of diversity in them. That being the case, I come back to the answer, and we don't always have to come up with our own answer if someone else has answered the question quite well. When Chadley was asked about a similar question, the point is, what we need to do is to make sure that Taoranga is seen as a place where every community, whoever they are, whatever their orientation, wherever they come from, gets a fear hearing and an opportunity. So it's about creating a city that's seen as open and provides an opportunity equally for everybody. It's as simple and as difficult as that.
Chadley, what box number?
The ones at home, 23.
We've got 23?
All right, this is question W for, wow, this is a question.
Yeah, it'll be a curly one.
How will you manage the city's finances?
That's appropriate, isn't it?
I won't. We pay people for that. But the council and the councillors around the council table, it's up to them to make sure that they're getting the right answers. Make sure that they're being told the truth. Make sure that you call in independent people to look at it every now and again, not all the time, just jam one in there every now and again to make sure that staff know that you're keeping an eye on the finances. The finances are so important. I mean, this last council and the commissioners, I don't know, $4 billion worth of spending. Hey, do you know, in five years' time, there's going to be a 150% increase in rates. We've already had 53%. And as John said, it's going to be 170% by 10 years coming. That means that every single one of your houses, every single one of your homes, you're going to have to find $200, $250 every week before you put it in the car, before you go to the supermarket, before you pay your rent or your mortgages and your insurances. Now, can anybody afford that?
Can I ask a question? I mean, not being local, but it sort of got me wondering, 168% rates increase over the next 10 years, is that 100% of what they're paying now plus 68%? Or is that 168 of what they're paying now?
Well, it's difficult to tell because those projected figures were put out last year. Since then, we've discovered that there's some 53% increases since then. And I would never question what John says. If he says it's 167% or something, he's right.
It's actually on top of what we are already paying. So it's 164% plus.
What's the average rates bill up here?
$5,400 a year.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's on par with...
So put that by 150, what do you get? If it's $5,000, you add the two $5,000, there's $10,000, another $2,500, and that gives you over $12,000, which is over $300.
Okay. Doug's got a button?
I've had a very close look at this rates issue, and it's a mystery. Well, I've only got a minute. So the last set of accounts that were produced was 2022-23. The rate take in those accounts was 260 million. The debt at the moment, now you've got, there's levies, a different funding model there now, but the rate debt was 450, 500 million. Okay, so you've got an interest charge around about $80 million a year on that. You've got a charge on staff of another $50 million, say. Well, that's half your rates. Now, we have industrial properties at the Mount. We've had them for years. An industrial rate's been created, and since 2021, our rates have increased by 105%. And the commercial rates got a differential around 80%. The residential rates are between 15 and 20%. That's what I think. But because the council is not transparent, we won't get a set of accounts until, new set of accounts until October, so we don't know what the rate take is. And then the...
We need to wrap up as well.
Our rates kick in 1st of July, but we won't get those numbers until October the following year. I asked Ann Tolly, Ann, can you please tell me, how much extra rates are you going to collect and what are you going to spend it on? She said, oh, you're going to have to wait for the LTP. Well, I can't figure it out. Sorry, Gladys, it's what I wish I could.
Yeah, we have bottom from Mahi.
I just want to clear some things up. Now firstly, there's some numbers thrown around here, and yes, they are scary. But this is rates revenue. That is not saying that each of you is going to pay 164% more in your rates. This is a growing city. There's going to be more ratepayers. And it is also, as John mentioned before, he said, we have been undercharging commercial rates and industrial rates. He was in council, others here were in council. Why did they not make that change? Who made the change? The commissioners. So there is a lot to answer for here and be very, very careful about these numbers. I'm an accountant, I know my numbers, and it is not 164% rate rise per person. Thank you.
And just go quickly, John? Yep, go quickly. Because I know you're probably, because you're on there, you probably want to answer that.
This is, we raised the question early on when we first were introduced to this idea, and I said, what happens if someone says something is factually incorrect? Do you use a button card or do you just come in? And it's a sort of fact-check issue. When I first arrived at council in 2013, I was stunned that we didn't have a commercial differential. The commercial differential was introduced by me with the agreement of Marty Grenfell in 2018. I was the person that initiated the commercial differential. Thank you, Mahi. With regard to all the other numbers that have been mentioned here tonight, I'd rather take that conversation offline from here and online where I can give you an accurate set of numbers. Because what I've heard tonight is random number generation. It's embarrassing, really, really embarrassing. And people who don't know the numbers shouldn't be standing for office. Thank you.
Okay, we've used up buttons, but real, we're moving on to you would be answering, opening the next box anyway.
Okay, that's great, but I just want to support what Mahi was saying and completely agree with the sentiments around, if you were in council previously, you had an opportunity to rectify the situation, and you didn't. And we've had some figures from Mahi, so kia ora Mahi. Further to that, the role of the mayor as well is to advocate for the city, find adequate funding sources that can offset the costs of the ratepayer. So my job or our job, whoever ends up being mayor, advocate to Wellington to broker the best city deal possible for the city. That's the role. Someone should always be advocating fiercely down in central government and across different sectors of, you know, shared services and whatnot. It's important to get our heads out of the fact that it's only about rates. Actually, we can do much more than that. We can advocate for other financial and other services to broker better deals for our city. So, kia ora.
Okay.
Box number 11, thank you.
All right, this is question F for Freddie. International studies have shown that an active appreciation of society's diversity boosts both positive wellbeing and economic growth. Some might argue Taoranga City has in the past been overly represented by a specific demographic. How would you ensure Taoranga City Council actively reflects our whole society?
Fantastic question. Perfect that you started that with F for Freddie. Fred's the name of my father, so I'm already loving this question off the bat. A way to broker and foster good relationships and social cohesion, that's kind of my offerings and my suite of delights and my priorities, is to let the communities have their specific voices heard. Our communities aren't homogenous, they're nuanced, and so it's about brokering opportunity for them to speak. So I would be really interested in seeing many of our communities participate through citizen assemblies, deliberative democracy, that they feed directly into their councillor and into council, and we can work on a continuation of the dialogue between council and the communities at large. I reckon that it would do so much to ameliorate so much of the fear or so much anxiety that is currently rife in our community at large. And I'm hugely supportive of a multiplicity of voices coming through the table.
Okay, next up, Tina, what box number?
Do we have 11? No, 17 is the lowest.
20?
No? I've got 19 and 21.
Go for 21.
Okay. My age, how did you know? All right, this is Z for zebra. What are your thoughts on charging commercial rates on houses used for Airbnb? If this is the case in Taoranga, will this be on houses that are only used for Airbnb or will this include houses that the host lives in and rents out bedrooms?
It's a difficult conversation. I think for Taoranga, I think because of our summertime swelling of our numbers over the summertime, we don't actually have a whole lot of hotels and motels and things. They fill up very quickly through the summertime. I think it would have a massive economic impact on Taoranga to do this. So I do not agree with doing that. I think one of the things we need to do is increase our hotels, increase our motels. If we think about things like aims games in Taoranga, we run out of accommodation very quickly. And I think our Airbnbs are actually quite vital to our economics in Taoranga.
Okay, next up, Andrew, what box number?
Yep, 26. Right, this is question N for the N-word and invicagul is nobi. Do you wish to promote or delay public transport measures for Taoranga?
Oh, that's the problem with the button cards. You end up butting in on something and then you answer it again. I already told you how far away Mahi lives and how many cars it'll take to nose the tail there, so yes, I support public transport. As I said in the last statement, Copenhagen has recently hit 69% of commuter traffic being cyclists. And that's just a time investment. And it has to start off by investing in things that very few people use. We have to make them safe so that people are more confident using them. I'm not fully committed to the current Cameron Road setup. I'm not quite convinced about the way the cars weave in and out of the cycle lanes, but I don't think that no one uses them yet is a valid argument not to continue building them because we just need to get cars off roads. And that includes also specified bus lanes. Thank you very much.
So Tina, go ahead.
I would promote public transport. I think cities function best when people can move around them safely, efficiently and in multiple different ways. I believe that public transport done well will support the economic, social and environmental wellbeings of Taoranga and our communities. I'm an advocate of on-demand, the on-demand smaller electric minibuses in suburban areas that feed into arterial or cross-city buses. I also value transport choice. If we find better ways to move around the city and provide safe infrastructure to do what our network will function far more efficiently. I think one of the elephants in the room is the way our public transport is managed in Taoranga. There are three different entities involved. We have the regional council doing the contracts and the routes, NTCC doing the infrastructure and the bus shelters and lanes. And I think those duplications create inefficiencies, red tape tensions, and ultimately, the community loses out. So I would like to see that amalgamated under one roof.
And I certainly hope Tina's off to Simeon Brown's office as well because something useful to know, there are two types of road users for buses. One, they're below 18 tonne, one that's above 18 tonne. And most large buses that are floating around here would be below 18 tonne, not above. So that might be useful to know of random piece of information. So if you're going to have a nine-tonne bus running around, can you please get Simeon to lower the road user charge rates? Tanya?
Right. Okay, I'm going to take a higher view on this. For me, transport is a toofa. Bear with me. So Taoranga is a conglomerate of low-density residential areas spread across thin peninsulas, linked by limited transport corridors with chaotic roading infrastructure running through it. Our roading infrastructure takes up more of our precious land and resources than our residential housing. I'm going to say that again. More space is used on roads and car parks than on housing in Taoranga. Okay? Our reliance on personal transport contributes considerably to our atmospheric pollution in Taoranga Moana. Our transport limitations, our transport options though, are limited by the cost per person to our residential areas to build and maintain good transport options. We are low-density. We have less money per person to put into those transport options. So when we're thinking ahead, we have to put the team together, increase the intensity, and I mean classy, not ghettos, right? Classy intensity. And then we have more money to put in those facilities and utilities and transport that we need. Thank you.
And don't take a seat because when I called you up, I was expecting you to answer a box number. So we get two for one.
Just like I like it.
What box number?
My long-term vision's not that great. 17 will do.
All right, this is question X for x-ray, X-Men, xylophone, X-crossing. If you are elected as mayor of Taoranga, will you support a binding referendum on a Maori ward in Taoranga at the next local body election? Yes or no?
It's not a yes or no answer because I will have absolutely no control over it. It is not something that local body governments have any control over. Central government has made that decision. They have told us, thou shall and we must. So that is my answer. We have no choice. It's been taken out of our hands.
Orela? Orela? What box number?
Closest one, 19?
19. 19, 19, 19.
All right, this is question AD for Assistant Director. The majority of Maori in Taoranga don't have a fakepapu here. How are you going to advocate for their needs and aspirations along with those of Manu Finua?
I have a few Maori friends and I never heard them to say that they want something out of this world. You know, the needs and the aspirations of Maori people are exactly the same as everyone else's. We all want to live in a city that promotes unity and creates opportunities for all its citizens. We all want to be able to have a house, to be able to swim in our harbour, in our rivers, to enjoy time with our family and children. So I want to improve and modernise this city for all of us. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you for that for candidates for asking, well, answering the questions, I should say. We're going to take a break now and then we'll come back for hard-hitting questions. We're going to take a break now and then we'll come back for hard-hitting questions. Okay, so hard-hitting questions here are the ones that we get every candidate to answer. You cannot use your button cards because you're going to be answering the question. Cannot use your defecates because you're going to be answering the questions. But that's how the good old part of hard-hitting questions sits there and goes. Let's kick off with hard-hitting question number one. Do you support the revitalization of the city centre slash CBD? And we get to kick off with Jaws first.
Yes, and you might be. I don't support the revitalization of the city centre as the way that the commissioners have promoted it with very iconic, not iconic, very slab-faced governance buildings that are reminiscent of communist era. I would support the revitalization of the city, regenerating itself through its own activities. Make the city centre a destination. And I would say that again comes to the railway. You have the railway coming up from the areas outside the city, Moparao, Tumaki, those places. And then linked up to the tramway going right up the length of Cameron Road, only four trains necessary, 15-minute intervals. And the traffic would come into the city and out, and they could hop off anywhere along that way, right to Pies Par. And shuhol buses would then Cameron Road being an arterial route. Thank you.
Okay, Donna?
That's good, I got to go earlier. Okay, so I knew this question was coming, so I actually went downtown today. And I called into a lovely place called Macpac, right on the corner. And I actually went and spoke to a lovely gentleman by the name of Lee, who is the manager down there. And I said to him, how are you coping down here? When I was driving the streets, there were 15 lists available buildings. And I said to him, so how are you doing? He said, actually, we're doing really, really well. I said, what's your secret? He said, we are a destination. People come to us for a reason. There's two other buildings in the same space, two other shops. And people go to them because they're a destination. So they will literally travel to see them. And I thought, well, that makes sense. You know, if you want to get something, you want to go somewhere. So yes, I actually support revitalization, but I think we need to listen to what people need or want or request instead of assuming. Thank you.
Uh, Greg?
Yeah, well, every about decade or so, the CBD seems to undergo some form of revitalization. Cobblestones, I think, originally did it. Then there was the Strand and the waterfront. And this time, a certain amount has happened, but most of all, it seems to have been at a manageable cost. But this one is a real big one, this is $500 million. There are about four buildings, plus the council building and the ongoing OpEx costs of those. So I have a concern about that. And I also have a concern how it was funded with an infrastructure levy versus rates, when in fact, they both come from the same source, the rate pass. I regard that as smoke and mirrors, not particularly fair. If you want to see something revitalized at a reasonable cost, go down and look at the groups at the historic village. You get nowhere near the amount of money that's going to go into the CBD and look what they've done there. In fact, we all went there and actually had a look. And yet the council at the time of the commissioners tried to hike their rents. I think this could be done a whole lot less expensively, the people of Tooranga. Thank you.
Next up Doug.
Revitalization with the hub and these council facilities is just one part of it. The town itself is a huge opportunity. I think one of the biggest problems we've got in the councils is the planning department's got too much power. I think that we should open that project up to a myriad of planners that exist in this town, and all very talented and creative. And work on it together. But you know, you travel the world, you find places like this. It reminds me, that downtown area reminds me sometimes of Amsterdam. You know, okay, the canal's down there, but we've got the water. You know, we've got this juxtaposition of all sorts of options. And I just don't think our planning department's got the wherewithal to handle this project. And it's probably the most exciting thing we could look forward to.
Okay, Mahi?
I think it's very exciting that the CBD is being revitalized. You know, the projects going on down there are fantastic. There's seven cranes on the skyline rebuilding our city. Now, if we want to be the best small city in New Zealand, then we're going to have to have a CBD that, as we heard, is a destination, that people want to come to. And the other thing we need to do is deliver housing in the city. And the best place in my mind to deliver housing is high-density in the city centre. But right now, do you want to live in the city centre? No. So we need to build some projects that we can revitalize the city and encourage people back to the city. Because this is the heart of Tooranga. And that is really important. You know, look what's happened in Christchurch, if anyone's been down there, you know, they stepped up, they built a couple of key projects, and everyone else got in and developed the city around it. So that's what we need to do, thank you.
Tim?
The city certainly needs fixing, it's a mess. Look, even Strandbags is closed. How bad is it when Strandbags is gone? I mean, I think we made, or the council rather, made a real mess of the centre of the city. It had beautiful old buildings, you've got Tezzi's Garage, you've got the Munro Building, you've got the old bank chambers. There's some lovely old buildings there. Tourists around the world like to go and see old buildings in old cities. They don't just like high-rises and mirrored glass, they like old buildings. So it's a pity to me that we didn't just develop what we had and turn that into a very nice sort of trendy village. Instead, we've got all this building. I do not like the council building, what they're doing at the civic centre and the Wari and the museum. I'm opposed to that. I think they're spending way too much money on Masonic Park. Goodness knows what they're doing with all the metal they're cleaning, so yes.
Next up John?
Yeah, thank you, it's difficult. The revitalization as it's currently envisaged, I find difficult to understand. Because it seems to me that rather than being progressive, it harks back to a New Zealand city of the 1960s. Some place where in the centre are large, tall buildings, often owned by corporates or commercial enterprises. And in Tooranga's case, the cost of the housing there would be prohibitive, it certainly wouldn't be affordable. So I'm thinking more, and someone's already mentioned Scandinavia, I'm already thinking, we've got the basis for what might be known as a connected villages or a polycentric city, which requires a very different sort of approach, if you like, to what a CBD is. I mean, we're looking at being in 2024, we're looking to build something that's going to be in existence for the next 20, 30, 40 years. And I don't think we should be emulating the models of the 1960s to do that. Thank you.
Chadley?
Thank you, revitalizing the city centre, well, it certainly needs it. Anybody that goes down there can see that the place is just deserted, it's like a ghost town. And there's probably a lot of reasons for that. But number one, the commissioners and council staff put together this half a billion dollar project, but come on, if it was so good, if it was such a great idea, if it was so beneficial, why hasn't private industry come in and fronted with the money? Why do the rate payers have to pay for it all? You know, there's something wrong here, this isn't right. But if you really want to get the CBD revitalized, it's a very simple answer to that. Car parks, bring back car parks, car parks, car parks, bring back car parks. Simple.
Uh, Ria?
Kia ora. We all know that Tooranga City Centre needs a juj and a half. And we have an opportunity now. We have an opportunity to do something different, to do something that hasn't been done before, and be bold in our moves to make action happen. So I'm all for revitalization of the city centre through various mechanisms, one being bringing housing into the city centre, building up. We have the opportunity to do that. Bringing back commerce into the city centre so businesses can come through and thrive off the people that live there. There's opportunities like YOS, who is actually an amazing advocate for multimodal transport. We have opportunities there to use our harbour to its fullest extent, if we have people living in the city, if we have people working in the city. And then we've actually got a vibrant city where people work, where people play, where people live. And it just becomes something that we haven't seen in such a long time. So I'm really energized about that, and I want to ensure that Tooranga is the space that takes us into the future. Kia ora.
Tina?
Well, Tooranga is growing very quickly, as we know, and it is the economic hub of the region. So yes, I support Tooranga becoming a thriving and accessible city with amenities that support innovation, economic wellbeing, sustainability, culture, a vibrant place for young and elder community that leaves a legacy for those that follow us. I love, there's so many fantastic things I agree with, that we need to have a vibrant marine culture around our harbour. Housing, it just makes sense to build housing in our city centre for that to become the next fastest-growing suburb in Tooranga. So my caveat would be that it needs to be delivered in a way that is affordable for our rate payers.
Andrew?
Yes, I absolutely support the revitalization of our CBD. It is economically important to the entire city. And the fact that it doesn't contribute to our economy means that we all pay for it. That being said, John's right, there are a couple of ways to build your modern cities. The old, most common way is you put a mass of people in the middle of your city. It's simple city planning, it's the place where most people can reach. Then you also put your big-ticket items in there because you want everyone to reach. And like was pointed out, your city centre becomes a destination. And that's a transitional way from a town. As you had mentioned, we've had our town CBD, or our town revitalized multiple times, but it was revitalized to be another town centre and not a city centre. So that's the big change that needs to come. Cities pay for themselves through economies of scale. So whether we either do that with our city centre or we sporadically buy throughout our city, it is a different city design. It's called the 15-minute city, good luck pushing that past most people. So that's kind of it. Yes, we need to revitalize it, yes, we need the CBD to pay for ourselves. But we have to make a decision now on whether we're going with a new city design or with an old city design.
Okay, Tanya?
Right. Yes, we are a city, we are growing, you know, we have no control over that, we're going to grow. The only thing we can do is embrace it and help it grow as beautifully, with as few growing pains as we can. What I see for Tooranga, yes, intensification in the city. Can't you imagine a buzzing CBD, residential, with a thriving arts and heritage community, a destination city? Yes, I do think we should have a civic centre, I think we need somewhere we can tell our stories and keep our To'anga precious to us and make it a destination. A thriving CBD where people live and work and play. But it does have to be, the caveat, it does have to be connected to the rest of the city. And I think we do need seamless transportation to those outer sections of the city. Thank you.
Yes, I think we all agree that we need to revitalize our city. However, we need to get rid of this incompetent people that, what they're proposing, half a billion spent into the CBD, at the same time they remove the car parks and there's no reliable transport to get to our centre. So I think we need to bring some business-minded people to the council that will attract the business and will create new opportunities. People will come and with great ideas how to revive our city. Just getting competent people out of that, that get in the way of our growth. Thank you.
Okay, that felt like a very long time to get those answers, but that's why it was with so many candidates. Let's kick off with hard-hitting question number two. Do you support the Tooranga City Council's long-term plan 2024-2034? Let's kick off with Greg.
Yes, I think the long-term plan has insufficient focus on the number one issue that people have consistently identified across the city, and that's roading and transport. There's no money in there, for example, for Totoru Street, our share of the Totoru Street, Hewlett's Road, grade separation. Because so much money is being spent on the CBD, there isn't enough money to go around for the rest of the city. One example, 100 million plus for a pool complex down at Memorial Park, but you can't find $10 million to keep Otamotai Pool open, the existing facility. So I think there are some real issues with it. Instead of repeating myself, I should get on and say that now there is democracy. The new council needs to make a long-term plan amendment, and that needs to be a people's amendment, not a commissioner's long-term plan.
Chadley?
Well, do I support Tooranga City Council's long-term plan? In a word, no. For the same reasons as Greg has just pointed out. The rate payers, really and truly, have had no input into this whatsoever. And yet you're expected to pay for it. Well, that's just not fair, let alone anything else. The idea that a new council and its mayor needs to revisit a lot of these decisions is so true. We definitely need to do that. We need to have a council that's coherent, and we need to have a mayor that's a good leader and can sit down with the CEO and say, why did you make this decision? Why did the commissioners go here? Because many people in Tooranga simply cannot understand the fathoming behind the amount of money that is being spent downtown of rate pass money, rather than having private enterprise build it and rent it back. I just
Ria? Yeah?
Yes, by and large, I do support the long-term plan, but what I would encourage is actually we take it further. We think intergenerationally as opposed to just 10 years. We think about the legacy that we're leaving for our children, our children's children, and so forth and so on. I think fundamentally, we've got good building blocks there. What we do with that moving forward, once a mayor and a council is in place, again, that can be revisited. So I'm excited about that. But fundamentally, the building blocks are there for us to pick it up and carry on, because we've got a job to do and we need to move forward and progress the city into the future. Kia ora.
Donna?
The long-term plan, okay. One of the things that I think my colleagues haven't brought up again is how much it's going to cost us by 34. How many billions of dollars are we all going to be in debt to make this a reality? I don't agree with that, I'm sorry, I just don't. However, I don't want to chuck the baby out with the bathwater. I think there are some good plans in there, there are some good options. But I think we seriously need to look at the affordability. And we need to come back and make people accountable for why they think that for why they think that getting us $3 billion in debt is a good thing. Because, I'm sorry, it's not. So from my point of view, yes, it's got some good bits in it. We need to make them accountable. It needs to be viable. You know, we're talking about our families in the future. And we're talking about what we're going to be doing in the future. $3 billion in debt is not a future I want. Thank you.
Oh, yes, I remember why it flipped over. Orioli?
Maggielie, yeah.
Oryadlu?
Yeah.
Alu, yeah. It's what happens when I get given about three different ways to say it from three different people, it doesn't help.
Yeah. As it stands, the long-term plan, I don't support it because I haven't seen in there how we're gonna, how we're gonna pay for it. A plan that doesn't have a way of paying for itself, that's, to my mind, that's not a plan. Using, you know, like a credit card, not knowing how you're gonna pay for it? No, it's not. Yes, there are some projects that, they sound good, but we have to be real. We cannot just pay for it and not knowing how we're gonna afford it. So my answer is not at this stage.
Tim.
Simple answer, I don't support the current long-term plan. By 2034, we're looking at $3 billion debt, and that is debt on all of the ratepayers. That's debt that we have to pay, not the commissioners, not the council workers. Well, council workers are ratepayers as well. If you look at the average total rates, if you include council, regional water, will be, the average household will be paying over $12,000 a year by 2034. What we've got to do is look at what's being spent. There's a lot of cost savings we could make with those projects. Some of those projects have to be scrapped. Some of them we can change. Some of them we're stuck with because they're too far advanced. But we cannot afford it the way it currently is. So we're going to have to have a good, long, hard look at the whole plan. Thank you.
Next up, Tina.
Yes, I support the general direction of the LTP. I believe our city needs to progress and manage growth well, but not at the expense of affordability. I will do a fiscal audit to determine what makes sense to progress, what may need to be deferred. I think affordability will not only be found in adjusting what we do in the LTP, but how we fund it, how we finance it, and how we deliver the projects that our city needs and what impacts they have on our ratepayers so we can progress our city for our sakes and the sake of our children.
Tanya.
Hi. I do, I do support the general direction of the LTP. I think there's a lot of good stuff in there, and I think we do need to keep moving forward as a city. Yes, we have to put a fiscal lens over it. That's continual. Councils have to do that consistently. This is no news to anyone. So think all that good stuff, I think we need to look at that. But I just want to say one thing here. Who has got a mortgage? Who bought their house using a mortgage, right? You bought your house because the cost of the interest on that mortgage was worth it for you to have that asset. And all these people standing up saying, we can't go into debt, we can't go into debt, are forgetting that you're buying assets. We're buying our house, our fare. We do have to look at how much that costs. We do have to look at the level. But we don't have to go, oh no, we can't go into debt. When we buy assets for future use, sometimes that's okay. I'm not saying it's always okay. I'm not saying the level's perfect. But for God's sake, let's just not go never on debt. It's actually a way of going forward sometimes.
Jos.
Right, there's good debt.
Sorry, Jos, wait till the end. Jos.
The long-term plan, as it stands, is flawed and it's based on total road dependency and car-centric, which is 1960 stuff. There are some good parts. Now, if we do, and I'm going back to multimodal transport, we develop that along arterial routes that automatically, antidopically creates intensification because it creates convenience and ease of transport and everything, makes life a lot easier. So these changes will come about, will be self-generating through the convenience that's afforded to the general public. And we don't have to do them all at once. We can stage it. We can do a unified plan. I think we really need a much better plan to say we're gonna move ahead and we're gonna do these bits as appropriate. And again, central to a futuristic plan is rail. I can't emphasize that too much. I've studied it, I've examined it, I've told experts, I've looked at everything.
Mahi.
I think the answer to this is it is a plan. Now, it is not a contract. We do not have to do everything in that plan. I believe in value for money. I will, each year as we do the shorter-term plans, assess those projects and decide what we are delivered. And as we go on, I would have had more consultation and more ability to come and talk to you and decide what is actually important to you in building the city. But I also agree with Ria. We've actually got to look at more, you know, 30 years, 50 years. What do we want from our city? And how does the long-term plan achieve that? That is how I have succeeded in what I have done. I've had a vision. I've had a dream. I've put a plan in place and I've worked really hard to achieve it. Now, that's what I want to do for Tauranga, and that's what I'm really excited about. Thank you.
Andrew.
Yes, overall, I do support the direction of the long-term plan. I think it's moving Tauranga in the right direction. I abhor manipulation through numbers, which is very common in this society these days. I really do abhor it. $3 billion in debt, 156% rates increase, oh my goodness. Has anyone ever heard of a small company called Amazon? Does anyone know they didn't make a profit for 10 years? Right? So if someone comes up and says, we're going to run this city like your household, please cross them off your list. This is a multi-billion dollar enterprise and you are electing its board of directors. You do not run a company's balance sheet the same as you run a household. That's just that side swipe. So overall, yes, I do support the plan. I think it's moving us in the right direction. As I've said throughout the night, we need to grow Tauranga into a city that can afford itself. A city that can pay for itself without putting up rates 10% every year. And I believe this long-term plan has given us a reset from mismanagement and is allowing us to move in the right direction. Thank you.
Doug.
Yes, I agree, we need a plan. I printed out the draft LTP, I printed out the final. It was about 600 pages. I'm working my way through it. But the interesting thing, at the front end of it, the commissioners state very clearly that they're only committing to the first three years of the 10-year plan, which said to me, reading between the lines, that that's the only budget they've got. And when they talk about a $4.9 billion wishlist over 10 years, that's a very scary number, and I think it's just driving people crazy thinking about it. Because you can't justify it. You can't find where the revenue is coming from. We just don't understand how you're gonna do it. And the planning involved is a big job. So when you focus on that first three years, they talk about a $250 million stadium. But they're only gonna do stage one, $90 million. I don't know what they're doing either.
John.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and put these numbers in context because either you've got a plan or you haven't. So if this plan proceeds as it's documented, it's quite simple. A pensioner at the moment who's paying 12% of their income on their rates bill, by the time you get to 2034, will be paying 27% of their income on their rates bill. And that rates bill will not include the regional council rates. Now, just think about that. That's what these numbers mean when you play this plan forward. And that's why I say that for anyone with a heart, this plan is unconscionable. And for anyone with a head, this plan is unsustainable. Thank you.
Okay, let's get to hard-hitting question number three. What is your position on fluoridating Tauranga's water supply? Kick off with Doug.
I remember this issue when I was 10 years old. When we first talked about fluoridation, there was a hell of a stir about that. Nobody wanted it. Most people didn't know what it was. But it was put in place. Now, I don't know clearly what the result of that was. I know I've got all my teeth. But the biggest issue, I guess, is the fact that we're taking this stuff into our bodies and it's being forced upon us. So there's an ethical issue here. But it's been in place for so long. It's a very knotty subject and it's very controversial. And am I gonna say whether I favor or not? Well, I think that'd be a bit unwise. So I would favor another debate, probably about the 12th debate. And we can have another look at it. But it's up to the community. Let the community tell us.
Okay. Orly.
If we're not gonna listen to the experts on this issue, who should we listen to? Do you think that I should make the decision? No, I think we should listen to the experts. Yes, sometimes they get it wrong. But it's more likely that I'm gonna get it wrong who I'm not an expert on this question than professionals. So I think we should trust the experts and we should go with it. The good thing is, you know, you don't have to drink that water if you don't want, okay? Unlike other things that I don't want to mention here. Okay, thank you.
Chadley.
Yeah, I'm in favor of a discussion, referendum, whatever you want to call it. I agree. I'm not a doctor, I don't know. But the evidence seems to be overwhelming that there is an advantage. And the problems that dentists in Tauranga have discovered since the fluoridation was taken out has increased dramatically. However, we might not have a choice in the matter because in the small print of the Three Waters legislation, gave the government permission to tell authorities what they were to put in their water. So we may have no say in it whatsoever. And I do get a little bit upset when people tell me that we're giving them medicine they didn't want. That's not strictly true. Most of us, in fact, all of us, came here from somewhere. We all came from continents that actually had fluoride in the water. And hundreds of thousands of years ago, our bodies learned to adapt, to use it. So it's not a medicine, it's just replacing the water we always had. So, I'm sorry. And as he said, there is no reason why you can't buy your own unfluoridated water if you really feel that bad about it. But at the end of the day, you know, as was said before by Dougie, it's up to you guys. I think there should be a discussion and I think there should be a referendum.
Okay. Donna.
Okay, so I've got five adult children. Two of them I raised with fluoride in the water and three of them I didn't. Didn't make any difference, they've all got their own teeth, all right? So for me, what I have problems with is someone telling me I should have stuff in my water. That should be a choice. It shouldn't be, this is what you're going to have whether you like it or not. And I guess that's probably coming back from the commissioners. This is what you're having whether you like it or not. It's time for us to actually have choices. So with my younger three children, I actually gave them fluoride tablets. So the whole time they were growing up, they had that, and that's their choice. I currently use a filter on my water. I don't see any problem with it. I think the key is we need to have choices. And having someone overrule that shouldn't be allowed. Thank you.
Tanya.
Okay, this is a thorny one. And I have some good friends who are gonna disagree with me so hard on this. But I do support fluoridation of Tauranga's water supply, whether we have a choice or not, which we may not. Okay. There is overwhelming statistical evidence that additional fluoride to the water supply saves a huge amount of grief and heartache related to dental trauma, particularly in the young. Okay, I hear and I sympathize with the arguments that fluoridation is forced medication. And people need to take responsibility for their own dental health and the health of their children. I get that and I agree. And in a perfect world, kia kaha, go for it. Let's not bother. But we don't live in a perfect world and not everyone has the same education, opportunities, or even responsibility in their lives, right? To ensure there is no dental pain in their children. So having fluoridated water, to me, is a very small price to pay for the pain that it will save people who have no choice, the children.
Okay, Ria.
Yeah, Tauranga City Council has been instructed by the Director General through the Ministry of Health that we must begin fluoridation, the process of it, come November 2024 of this year. So to that effect, we don't actually have an option at this point in time. So really, that means that that subject is moot if it comes to Tauranga City Council. And I do agree that it is a very, very sticky subject and it's something that people feel very strongly about. And what I want to say to that is that everyone is entitled to their opinion and everyone is entitled to express their opinion in the way that they see fit as being a democratic citizen of this country. And so, yeah, kia kaha, kia tato. I think it's really important now to be kind and to be empathetic and to understand people's positions, whether or not you agree with it. Kia ora.
Tina.
Well, may I humbly suggest that my opinion on fluoridation is not what is important. You're not voting for me based on whether we agree or disagree about my views on this. I think my value to you as mayor is that I will ensure, along with the councillors, that you elect, that your voice is heard, listened to, and we make decisions that best represent the 161,000 of us, not whether we agree or disagree on government-mandated fluoridation.
Andrew.
I agree with some of my colleagues. I can understand why it's a contentious issue for many people. But as a health professional and science lover, I am absolutely in favor of fluoridating our water. The evidence is just simply overwhelming. Tooth decay has long-lasting ramification on every aspect of your health. Like, it's not just bad teeth, like, it's associated with heart disease. There's a whole range of evidence coming out that links your intestines to your brain. And so just that whole process. And I am fortunate enough to be privileged. That's not a word that a lot of people like to hear anymore, but I am. I've had a very fortunate upbringing. I have had parents who have sent me through education and I've had enough wealth to get by. A lot of people in our society don't, far more than I would ever like to truly admit. And it is our responsibility as a decent society to take care of them when they can't. And one of the most simple things in fluoridating, it reduces the harms so immensely to people that usually can't fight for it themselves. Thank you.
John.
It's keep the... Oh, so is it John or Tim? It's John. Oh, sorry.
I can keep this really short. I agree with Andrew Kai. I agree with Ria Hall. Thank you.
Mahi.
This is something that is obviously controversial. You know, just giving you an indication of how I work, I don't know. I'm not a health expert, I'm not sure. So what I would do to make this decision? Obviously, I'd canvas what you guys think, because we work for you. Second... Secondly, we'd look at all the health advice and what was appropriate. Because there is countries in the world that are taking fluoride out of the water because of the health effects that it is having on young and pregnant women. So we do have to take that into account. But also we have to then weigh that up with a dental hygiene. So we've got a tough decision to make here, but we'll certainly take it. We'll look at all the evidence and make a good decision. And I'll be accountable and transparent on how that decision was made. Just, I actually disagree with Rhea on this. We can do what we want as a local council and we won't be dictated by government. Thank you.
Tim.
Finally there. I've got it right this time. Look, I remember fluoride from when I was about seven, eight, nine, 10 years old. It's been going backwards and forwards for years. And who knows what the right answer is? All we can do is try and find out all the information we can. And there are lots of different sources. I mean, if I was on council, there are experts. But ultimately, we should be giving that information to the community and let the community decide. Now, if the government's already decided for us, I think that's a pity. They've already showed us they're not always on the ball with the whole COVID thing. But we just, we've got to deal with what we have. Okay, thank you.
Greg.
Yes, well, local government is a creature of statute and it is actually submissive to central government. So if central government directs local government to do something, they must do it. And from what I've heard, that central government has directed, there will be fluoridation. Now, one of the many things that council has done well in the past is its water supply. And it was probably the first city in the country to introduce microfiltration, which took out all the impurities in the water. And it was really ahead of its time. So we didn't need Three Waters. I don't know where I'm going with this. So I just wanted to, I wanted to say that some people might see it a pity to add a mass medication. But as I say, at the moment, there's no choice. If there was to be, I then think we've got to consult with the whole community. Thank you.
And Joss. Joss.
Fluoridation in some areas occurs naturally in the water. And I don't know what the percentage in Taoranga is, but it probably needs to be up to a little bit to get to a natural level. However, we should be looking at the causes of tooth decay really, and that's sweet drinks, sugary drinks. I had a young chap who I was looking after years ago and he arrived one day with a big litre bottle of soft drink, sugary drinks. I said, that was no good for you. Hawaii. And he said, oh, but it's fat free, he said. So it's education you need, you know, changing your diet so you minimize tooth decay, cleaning your teeth. Fluoridation helps, but you've got to do the education of cleaning your teeth, good dental hygiene and that sort of thing, which will help tremendously. Fluoride isn't going to stop it, but it will help, but not above natural level. So, and as has been said, if the central government dictate you're going to have fluoridation, well, that's the way it will be for a while till anybody...
Thank you candidates for answering the three hard hitting questions. Now we've got to the final bit, that is closing statements. And each candidate has one minute on why they are asking you, the voter, to give their first preference vote to the candidates. And we'll start off with Tanya.
Right, so why choose me to be your mayor? I love Taoranga. I see her. I see her as an emerging city that my family and I will choose to live in together and we will all have something in this city. They're not going to fly because it's going to be an amazing place. I have the traditional skills that a university education and business experience bring. I have fiscal responsibility. I understand finance, I understand people, I understand places. But I also founded and directed an arts business for 30 years and learnt the subtle and important art of herding cats. These are the skills that I'm going to take in with me to the leadership role. Flexible, creative, inclusive style, still goal oriented. I understand those spreadsheets and balance sheets. But perhaps more curious and open minded than previous councils. Thank you very much for your time tonight. It's a cold night. It was great to see you here.
Orley.
Now is the time for all of us to decide whether we bring to the council someone with a business approach to tackle our council spending or we bring back same people that been there before. They tell us that they know how to do it. They don't quite tell us why they haven't done it last time around. Increased rates and more borrowing, I don't think is the answer for our city moving forward. The answer for our city is tackling the wasteful spending and invest our money in things that actually makes a difference for our people. And that's roading, housing, drinking water and so on. That's my message. And thank you to all of you and good luck to all of us. Thank you.
Greg.
Yes, well, as you know, I've done the job before. It wasn't a perfect job, but I did manage to lead successfully for three years a group of very councillors with diverse opinions and backgrounds. And we managed to preserve our democracy as well. At the same time, we did deliver a number of projects. We started the Waari Water Scheme. We voted for that. We finished the Southern Pipeline Sewage Scheme. A lot of infrastructure, the new airport building. And sure, there were problems along the way, but it never got in the way of my personal relationship with any council or councillor. And I won votes and I lost votes and both were fine. Thank you.
Andrew.
I was still trying to think up what to say. I usually start with you should vote for someone who's going to grow the city properly. And then obviously we have our questions answered where you get a feel for my plans. And then I like to finish with telling you about myself. But unfortunately, in one of my two questions, I drew that one. So why should you vote for me? I believe that I come with a skill set that will serve you and the city well. And I believe that I can contribute effectively. And one thing that I want to point out is that for me personally, I'm campaigning for the next three elections. Obviously you'll get a choice in between now and then. But I've noticed a couple of other candidates, you know, they want to set the ship right and then go on their way. And I don't think that's what Taoranga needs right now. I want to be involved in the 10 year plan. I want to finish the 10 year plan and then you can replace me with new blood to do the next one. But I think right now Taoranga needs some continuity and some consistency. And that's what I will offer you for the next 10 years.
Mahi.
Let's not go back. If you vote for me, we'll go forward and we'll realize the potential of this great city. I'm really looking forward to bringing my family over here and showing them what a great city I grew up in. It's an exciting future for our city with the right councillors around the table. I back myself to be able to work as a team of 10 on behalf of the team of 161,000. It's very important that we work for you. We don't work on our own agendas. We don't work and we don't like dysfunction. We want to win for you. And that's what I can deliver. I have a skill set. I'll be accountable to you. If the rates rise, I'll stand in front of you and I'll tell you why they're rising. But I will get you value for money for every dollar that I spend of your money. So that's why you should vote. Mahi Drysdale, number one. Look forward to a positive future for our city. Thank you.
Chadley.
Well, that's a bit tough to follow, isn't it? Well, I think we've gone over a number of things over and over tonight. I think the most important thing is that you vote for a leader. Someone who's able to bring all of the people around the council table together and be able to also engage with city council staff. You need someone to settle the boat in the water. We need to have a long look at some of the decisions that have been made into the future. As has been said tonight, it's simply unaffordable, unmanageable, and have another look at them. Bring it back to something that's realistic. We need a mayor who's going to be able to communicate with city officials. But those city officials need to stand up too. And there has to be some kind of an investigation into exactly how it's working. Because right now, it's not.
Rhea.
Taoranga Moana, it's time. It's time to put your vote and your energy and your faith into something that has never been seen here, ever in the history of our politics. Ever in the history of local government here in Taoranga, has a person like me been afforded an opportunity to stand as the mayor of the city? I present that opportunity for you all now. I present the progressive, positive future that your mukupuna deserve, that your children deserve, that you fundamentally deserve as a rate payer, as a citizen, as a global human living, breathing Taoranga Moana. Why else? Because I'm completely invested in this space. I'm raising my children here. I'm growing our capacities here. And I want to grow the capacities of our city to become the place that we all deserve it to become. Because we have that opportunity now. The time is now. And I believe that I'm the one to deliver it. Rhea Hall, number one.
Donna.
How am I supposed to follow that? Okay, so I stand for rate payers. I'm here to support you. I'm here to listen to what you need. So my three things are rate payers, accountability and viability. I think that's been missing. I think the rate payer voice has been lost. Yes, I have degrees. Yes, I've worked in small business. Yes, I've had a career in IT. I've been up against those people that don't agree with the things that I do. I've been an IT engineer, Microsoft certified. That goes against the grain. I don't mind standing up and standing there and saying, I am accountable to you. And I think that's what needs to happen. I think someone needs to stand up and be accountable to the rate payers. Not giving excuses, but actually standing there and taking stock of what decisions they made. And I think you guys have the right to have that. Thank you. Vote Donna Hannah for number one.
Tim.
Right. Council, it's very, very mundane, really. We do wastewater, freshwater, stormwater, roads, facilities. It's all very boring. It's not very exciting really, but you need practical people who can make good decisions, people who know and understand what's going on, people that can sift through all the facts and work out the best solution for what Taoranga needs. So I'm an engineer. Basically, what council does is engineering, you know? It's all engineering or nearly all engineering. And I think one of the things that council lacks, we've lacked on the mayor or on the council, but also on the staff, the staff of even the council staff, they've got rid of all their specialists. So as an engineer, I think I can help make good decisions for the city.
Joss.
What council needs is someone who's got good ideas, knows how to implement them, is diplomatic, pragmatic and good with financial means. And also unifies the council and brings forth a strategy or a spokesman for a strategy that will work and benefit long term for Taoranga, for the future generations, so that the money spent is well spent and is accountable for. So it bears a great responsibility on the council, on any mayor, to see the way for the future. And in doing so, it may be a bit unpopular, but it will be for the greater good of Taoranga and it'll benefit future generations. We'll have a city which will be convenient. It'll be nice to live in, be happy for people and people's wellbeing. And it'll be affordable. That's the other big thing that you need in life. And it'll give freedom too from some of the constraints now.
Okay, Doug.
Ladies and gentlemen, I describe myself as a creative. My skill set is fit for purpose. I have spent years in the transport industry, information technology and construction. I've also had 10 years in local government. I can do my numbers. I'm used to dealing with big numbers and dealing with very complex issues. I see this challenge as being one that I really want to win. And I want to win it for you. You are the investors, you invest every year. But do you get a return? Do you get a return that you understand? I can read the balance sheet. I'm sure you can too. Try and read the council balance sheet. It's impossible. 160 pages of nonsense. You've got to get to the point, follow the money and get the job done. And no nonsense are promised in that.
John.
Hi, it's Greg mentioned earlier that the local government is a creature of statute. So I'm thinking section 10 of the Local Government Act. The purpose of local government is to basically fulfill the democratic will of the people and I'm a committed Democrat. I'm thinking section 41A1A of the Local Government Act. And that's the role of the mayor. And critical, when you think about the role of the mayor, is they have no executive power. They can't instruct anyone. They can't make things happen. I worked as a consultant and the great thing about working as a consultant is the only way you can get a board that you're dealing with, whether the Board of General Motors, the Board of Barclays Bank, the only way you can get that board to move with you is to take them with you with argument and reason and logic. You have no power. You have to be able to work through people. I bring the experience of working through people. I bring an understanding and a commitment to section 10 and section 41. Thank you.
Tina.
I'm standing with a focus on our people and our city's progress over politics. And with a focus on innovation and solutions for all of us, creating effective, inclusive engagement to empower our communities to be a part of the decisions that affect them. I'm asking you to elect me as your mayor as Taoranga needs strong, inclusive, strategic and stable leadership that can lead a healthy and effective culture to focus on the work we need to do together for ourselves, for our tangata finua, for our children, with regional partners, our national partners, and to find and advocate for the solutions for all of our sakes.
Thank you for that. And just as a reminder, like I do with every single show, when it comes to voting, you use the voting system, single transferable vote. So just, it's not just your number one that's going to be important. It's also where you send your second, your third, your fourth, your fifth preferences, right up to 15, on how you do it. Because this election is going to be decided by second and third preference votes. It's not necessarily going to just be decided by first preference votes. So make sure you rank, you know, utilize your ballot paper and rank the candidates. You've got, was it a brilliant set of candidates right here who have taken their time out tonight and taken a very extended night? This is probably our longest sits in the ballot show. But as we say, there's a lot of candidates here and sometimes time is how you get for it all. Can I say thank you to the candidates for putting your feet to the it's in the ballot fire? It's not easy sitting there doing this. I'm very proud that we actually had virtually a full house of mayoral candidates. I think this is a lesson that we can teach my current home city, Wellington City Council, that the mayoral candidates could sit there and learn the same thing. Because I would like to say when we had our Wellington City mayoral candidates, I'd call it the B team. Well, guess what? Tonight, everyone was here, so there was no distinction being chosen between an A team, a B team and a C team along the way. We made sure everyone was here and everyone took the opportunity to take a seat. We made sure everyone was here and everyone took the opportunity to take a seat. Thank you for doing that. It's not easy to put yourself to there. It's not easy to chuck yourself in front of a video camera and have it be livestreamed. But thank you for doing that. Can I also say thank you to the team here? Was it Ray, was it Nick, Brody, who's in here, who's doing it? Paul, who has done the question box. Ian, who has come down from Auckland to sit there and do some of the shows. And Stacey for doing all the shows remotely, editing, doing her part from Wellington. It's not easy trying to pull this off with a very small team, but we've managed to pull it off. And thank you to the audience for coming tonight. I was very scared we were going to run out of chairs. That was the big thing I was scared about when I sat down there and saw we only had 80 chairs in the venue. And I knew 20 of them would have been sacked up by the candidates and the crew. So where was the other 60? You know, what happened if we had more than 60 people in the audience? So, but I think we've managed to make it work. And thank you so much for being here. If anyone here would like to donate to It's in the Ballot production, I do have an ePOS machine here. You can also drop it to our bank account number on what to do there. This project was fully funded by Small Dollar Donations. I'll be honest with you, I'm the biggest contributor. And Ray, who's right down there, is the second biggest contributor to making this event go place. And all the crew here have volunteered their time to make this work. Oh, and yes, and Andre for the gear, yes. Also, we will be doing is something we've learnt to do with local body elections is to rerun our footage. We will be doing the reruns of the footage, which will be on Saturday, the 13th of July and Sunday, the 14th of July, where the It's in the Ballot Facebook page and YouTube channels and our affiliated channels who are rebroadcast in the stream. And maybe some new ones who might jump on board to do the rebroadcast. We will livestream these shows to give voters a second reminder on who to vote for before you post off your voting papers or drop them into a Dropbox. And hopefully, the supermarkets up here have all drop boxes in them. Fingers crossed, I'm not exactly on the loop to that. But I do know that was quite common down my neck of the woods last local body elections. So thank you for joining there. And just some other random news that does come up. We have secured a booking for the Kiri Kiri Raua Maori Ward by-election, which is Hamilton City Council. That will be happening on now, I'm just going to make sure I get the date right. But I think it's, why do I have to do? You forget when you're in the middle, same thing. Thursday, the 11th of July. So that would be something for those who are watching online. Who knows, we follow elections, that's the next thing that we have on there. Thank you so much for sitting there doing that. Any comments that would like to be given from audience or members or Paul? Would you like to jump over for the mic so those at home can listen?
I have one question for all the candidates here. From any one of these jobs, any historic council project that has come in under budget or on budget?
John.
I've got an answer to that. Oh, sorry. John, you go first. Yeah, in 2013, there was a lot of discussion around the election at the time. A group in Greten wanted a library, they've been promised it for years. A group of us got together under the 2013, after 2013 election. We conceived the library, planned a library, built a library and it was open before the next election. And that came in under budget, came in under $4 million. And people in Greten are really happy with it. Simple project, simply executed, within a budget, fit for purpose. Perfect example of how to do local infrastructure for your wards. Greten Library.
Can we get quickly going on that one? Because that was not planned or scripted.
Right, so I've got another example. Apparently, the Harrisons Cut work they did, where they put the retaining wall and came in under budget, partly, I think, because they used a new contractor who wasn't used to the council charging structure.
Go ahead, Tina.
Yeah, I have two examples for you. There was the Mo'awa Base Track, which had been projected to be about $4 million and had taken a number of years of trying to make a decision. When we were elected in 2019, within about 10 weeks of being elected, we had that project completed for $700,000. The other one was in 2020 Wolf Street. The redevelopment of Wolf Street came in under budget and on time.
Okay. Joss, that's enough of that.
I've done lots of projects, but one in particular, done about 1995, when I was an engineer for the council. We built the, I designed, I attended, I supervised the construction and did the whole thing. It was the Nataro Road underpass and it came in at $115,000. The railway underpass at Nataro Road.
Okay, Brody, let's kick off a karakia.
Tina Chrisam, kick off, perhaps, perhaps kick off what's next as we leave this space. Did we have any eruptions tonight? I'm not sure. But nonetheless, we'll clear the way. At this stage, I just want to acknowledge e emehi ana ki nga iwi manu fenua o teneiroi o Taronga Moana. Just to acknowledge the tangatafenua with ancestral claim to Taronga Moana. Be ngatirangi nui, ngatirangi, ngatipu ki nga ne waitahua hei tapuaka. E emehi ana ki akota, I acknowledge, I acknowledge all of them, all of you. And to all of you here tonight, we'll clear the way for us to leave this space and go back with ease and peace, along with our lives, towards an election. And congratulate all of you and to the victor on your presence and strength in sharing your message tonight and to your victory and leadership when the time comes. Onohia, onohia, onohia ki turo tapu nui. Kia watea, kia watea, kia watea. Kia mama te ngākao, te tina na te wairo e te arata kata. Ko ya nai e rongo, tu turoa futevaka mua, kia taina. Homie huiye. So we go, we clear, we clear, we be free and unbind of any ties, any tensions, any conflicts, any eruptions from the evening and go with peace always above us and around us. Gauritato, back to you, Sam.
And thanks for watching and have a good evening.